...of the Department of Energy with focus on the physical performance. And under the present administration, the Department of Energy is committed to ensure energy access, secure, reliable, resilient energy supply, transition to clean, sustainable, and climate-centered energy resources, as well as promote affordability of energy. So allow me to mention a few of our significant accomplishments. Let me first discuss the Malampaya Service Contract 38, which has been renewed to ensure the field's full production and to kick-start the timely drilling of infield and near-field prospects estimated at around 210 billion cubic feet. And the renewal agreement extended the service contract for 15 years until 2039. And this will allow for the continued production of the Malampaya gas field and to ensure the remaining 147 billion cubic feet of gas reserves to be produced. Next, please. So this administration has also progressed in developing the country's indigenous energy resources. And the DOE and the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region for Muslim Indanaw, or BARP, have signed a joint circular with regard to the mechanisms for petroleum and coal service contracts in the region, as well as this will renew the interest in these promising sites in the region. On the other hand, the Nido Petroleum Philippines is moving forward with the site surveys and plans to drill two wells. These activities demonstrate the DOE's commitment to explore and harness our indigenous resources as well as attract foreign investments in the country's oil and gas sector. So for the first time in the country, the Philippines will now have receiving and regasification facilities for imported liquefied natural gas, not just one, but two facilities. And these facilities will support the five existing gas-powered plants and to aid in the energy transition plan of the government to cleaner energy. The energy sector also adopted a game-changing reform by opening the RE sector to full 100% foreign ownership. As a result, three offshore wind contracts with a combined capacity of 2 gigawatt were awarded to Copenhagen Infrastructure New Markets Fund, a 100% foreign-owned company. The World Bank Group in its 2019 study ranked the Philippines fourth among offshore wind emerging markets in the world. So the country has a total potential of around 178 gigawatt for offshore wind and six potential offshore wind development.
...consideration, fairness, and jury guard by giving due notice to the respondent and on the basis of the substantial evidence acquired by the Committee on Ethics and Privileges, this committee, by unanimous vote of its members, recommends to the House of Representatives the imposition of the penalty of expulsion from the House of Representative Arnolfo Arrietibes Jr. With this, it is now incumbent for this honorable body to decide whether or not to adopt our recommendation, considering the steadfast commitment to uphold the role of law and standard of morality in the House of Representatives. We stand at the crossroads of history. It has made the informed, even if painful choice to stand by our people and remain honorable representatives the Filipino people deserve. Thank you, dear colleagues. Mabuhay ang bansang Pilipinas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Parliamentary inquiry, Mr. Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the gentle lady from Iroiro, Congressman Janet Garin?
Mr. Speaker, I would like to be clarified with regards to a content in the committee report.
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Honorable Chairman. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, Honorable Chairman, on page 12 to 14 of the committee report, one of the findings being discussed is the designation of Representative Arnolfo Teves Jr. as a terrorist by the Anti-Terrorism Council. We are aware, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, that this designation still has to go through a process of appeal and final decision. With this, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, may we inquire from the Honorable Chairman that a mere designation by the Anti-Terrorism Council of a member of this House without any other ground, will that be considered as a ground of expulsion, for expulsion?
Mr. Majority Leader, we shall recognize the Chairman of the Committee on Ethics. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Your honors, it was just only included in the discussion, but in our recommendation, it is very clear that we just act on our recommendation for the disorderly behavior and for violation of the Code of Conduct. And a mere designation is not the basis of our recommendation.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, Honorable Chairman, just to be clear about it, Item B in the findings and discussion is a mere discussion, but the main reason for the recommendation is disorderly behavior and violation of the Code of Conduct of the House of Representatives as contained in the committee report of the Committee on Ethics. And for the record, the Chairman, Mr. Speaker, is stating that this will not mean that any member of Congress who will be listed or designated as a terrorist of the Anti-Terrorism Council would actually mean a violation of the Code of Conduct and hence will result to expulsion. And that is clear, Mr. Speaker. Do we get the confirmation from the Honorable Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I affirm on that.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
You. So Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt the findings and recommendations contained in Committee Report Number 717. And for this purpose, direct the Secretary General to call the roll of members for nominal voting.
There's a motion to adopt the findings and recommendations contained in Committee Report Number 7.
An inquiry, Mr. Speaker, just a reiteration for our part.
What is the pleasure of the lady?
Yeah, this pertains, Mr. Speaker, again on Letter B, the one of the, one of the bases, right, which is written here in our committee report, Letter B on the designation by the ATC as terrorist to Representative Teves. So may I know from the Chairman of the Committee on Ethics, Mr. Chair, that is the designation of the ATC to Representative Arnolfo Teves a basis in our, in our rules, just to clarify then, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I severely reiterated a while ago that the designation of the ATC for our colleague is not the basis for our recommendation.
And, Mr. Speaker, distinguished honor, are you saying that for the basis of designation alone will not be the basis for any of us to be expelled? Just to reiterate.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, designation alone would not suffice as our basis for this recommendation.
And do you also confirm, Mr. Speaker, that in our Rule 20 on page 76 of our Rules of the House, on Section 141 on Code of Conduct, there is no mention about designation of terrorist?
Yes, it is there, you know, from our report that we are just only talking on the disorderly behavior and for violation of our Code of Conduct of our House of Representatives.
And in your report, Mr. Speaker, you are just mentioning for a fact that there is a designation by the ATC, but it's not the basis for expulsion alone?
Mr. Speaker, in our report, it's just there as part of our discussion during the meeting and we are included in our committee report.
Okay, that's all, Mr. Speaker. Majority Leader, thank you.
I repeat now, there is a motion to adopt the findings and recommendations contained in Committee Report Number 717. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to call the roll of members for nominal voting.
Roll call of members for the adoption of the findings and recommendations Committee Report Number 717 submitted by the Committee on Ethics. Honorable Representatives Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong.
Mr. Chair.
Honorable Adyong.
Mr. Speaker. Honorable Congressman Ziya is recognized.
My vote is yes, and I would request that my written explanation of my vote be included into the records, Mr. Speaker.
So noted, yes.
Thank you.
Advincula, Agarao, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistio, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barberz, Baronda, Barsaga, Vasco, Bautista, Bautistalim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado.
Mr. Speaker. Congressman Bordado is recognized. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My vote is yes, but kindly allow me to give a short explanation later. Yes, thank you.
Bosita, Briones, Brosas.
Sir Speaker, my vote, my vote is abstain, Mr. Speaker, abstain pala, there's no vote, abstain.
Okay. So noted, go ahead, please.
Buahin, Bulut Bektang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon Uwi, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carey, Castrofrans.
Yes, Congressman Castro is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, my vote is abstain.
That's okay, so noted. Go ahead.
Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalau, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Angko Jaime, Ko Angko Mark, Kolada, Koliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kua, Koresma, Dago, Delipe, Dalog, Dayangirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor del Mar, De Los Santos, Dimapor Mohamed Khalid, Dimapor Siti Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Hino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudela, Fariñas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio Juliet, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Bella, Galeos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Osaro, Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guiko, Gintu, Bulias, Gutierrez, Agidorn, Aresco, Ataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Oribata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Ligorda, Libanan, Limkaytong, Leola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikiz, Manuel.
Mr. Speaker.
Congressman Manuel is recognized.
I abstain from voting on this matter because in the first place, the committee report should not have included what was being pressed on by the Anti-Terror Council, which is a very questionable body in our country right now. Thank you.
So noted, please proceed.
Maranyon, Marcoletta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Atibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Isai, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Oaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuán, Ordanes, Ortega, Oanodizon, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicias Agabas, Humaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehencha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yulohiyo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romar Desforden Martin, Romales Yadamri, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Saqdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sali, Salumbangan, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Richel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Michaela, Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maica, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Tedoro, Tevez Arnolfo, Tevez Jose, Teanko, Teeng, Tolentino, Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Jocelyn, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Titor, Ti, Kumali, Unabia, Kungab, Valeriano, Valmarior, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velozot, Pozon.
Mr. Chair.
Congressman, Velozot is recognized.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker, I vote yes, and I would like to submit my written explanation to be reflected in the record as explanation of my vote.
Noted, please proceed.
Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villa Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villa Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villa Nueva, Villor, Villaraza, Villaraza Suarez, Villa Rica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christiantel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Ed Vic, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jezo Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri.
Second call on the adoption of the findings and recommendations on Committee Report Number 717.
Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Barsaga, Bautistalim, Biliones, Bolilia, Bondok, Briones, Koliantes, Dayangirang, Daza, Duhali, Duterte, Di Ian Paul, Ecleo, Emano, Fariñas, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Gomez, Gonzaga, Agidorn, Ataman, Ko Ricardo, Laxon, Lagman, Legarda, Libanan, Madrona, Matugas, Puno, Remulia, Rilio, Saulog, Tan Samir, Tan Chai, Tevez Arnolfo, Tolentino, Villa Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villa Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villa Nueva, Yap Eric Zubiri.
With 265 members voting in affirmative, zero against, and three abstentions, the findings and recommendations contained in Committee Report Number 717 on the matter of Representative Arnolfo Arnie A. Teves are now adopted. Mr. Speaker. We now proceed, Mr. Majority Leader, on the explanation of votes. We have a reservation on the part of Congressman Bordado.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the Honorable Bordado?
The Honorable Congressman Bordado is hereby recognized. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, thank you, Mr. Majority Floor Leader. Mr. Speaker, I read the committee report submitted by our colleague Representative Felimun Esparas, the Chairman of the Committee on Ethics and Privileges. The committee posited such major reasons as disorderly behavior and violation of the Code of Conduct of the House of Representatives for recommending that the penalty of expulsion be imposed on Representative Arnolfo Teves. But, Mr. Speaker, the inclusion of his designation as a terrorist by the Anti-Terrorism Council seems to be out of bounds. Because whether or not a person is guilty of terrorism is a matter to be decided by the courts following due process. It's good, Mr. Speaker, that the Chairman of the Committee on Ethics and Privileges made the clarification. So I am therefore voting yes. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. The explanation of your vote is hereby noted, so Majority Leader. We have no...
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session, session resumed. In line with the adoption of the recommendations of the Committee on Ethics and Privileges, the Secretary General is directed to furnish the appropriate agencies a copy of Committee Report Number 717. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading, House Bill Number 7587. Printed copies as well as electronic copies were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. Is there any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and call the roll for members for nominal voting. House Bill 7587, an act declaring March 10 of every year as a special working holiday in the entire country to be known as the National Junior Chamber International JCI Philippines Day. Roll call of members in consideration of third reading of House Bill 7587. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistio, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barberz, Baronda, Barsaga, Vasco, Bautista, Bautistalim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon. Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Rosas, Buahin, Bulitwigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayunuy, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Ardema, Kari, Castro France, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tchua, Tschungalau, Ko Angelica Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Wankohaimi, Ko Wankoh Mark, Kolada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Tagooc, Delipe, Dalog, Dayangirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, Delos Santos, Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Dimaporo Siti Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhalí, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleio, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Fariñas, Fernández, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Funtibelia, Galeios, García Albert, García Dante, García José Arturo, García María Angela, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Garjola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gómez, Gonzaga, Gonzales Aurelio, Gonzales Neptali, Gonzales Sandro, Curiseta, Gico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Agidorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera, Oribata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Ko Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagundafni, Lagunsani, Lara, Lasatin, Lee, Ligarda, Libanan, Limkey Chong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Kapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariana Hernandez, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Negrales Juan Fidel Felipe, Negrales Margarita, Nolasco, Waminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuang, Ordanes, Ortega, Uanodizon, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehencia, Remulia, Rivilla Brian, Rivilla Ramon Dzolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez Ilohiyo, Rodríguez Rufus, Román, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaria, Sagaluran, Salceda, Sali, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rochelle, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihán, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suárez, Talyado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Tchodoro, Tevez Jose, Chanco, Cheng, Tolentino, Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velosituazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villa Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villa Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villa Nueva, Villor, Villaraza Suarez, Villa Rica, Vilago, Yamsuan, Yap Christian Tel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edwick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jezzo Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7587. Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Pantallón, Amatong, Barzaga, Biliones, Bolilia, Bondok, Briones, Coliantes, Dayangirang, Daza, Duhalí, Duterte, Di Ian Paul, Ecleio, Emano, Fariñas, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Gómez, Gonzaga, Agidorn, Ko Ricardo, Laxon, Lagman, Legarda, Libanan, Madrona, Matugas, Remulia, Rilio, Saulog, Tan Samir, Tan Chai, Tolentino, Villa Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villa Nueva, Yap Eric, Zamora Amparo Maria.
With two hundred seventy-one members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill Number 7587 has having been approved on third and final reading. Floor Leader?
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, I move that we recognize the guests of the Honorable Ariel Yodong González Jr., Senior Deputy Speaker. They are Mr. Tengo Rospe of Dongwang Clark Corporation, Mr. Bernie Ángeles of Dongwang Clark Corporation, Barangay Captain of Sindalan, Dr. Benji Ángeles, Barangay Kagawad Rolimamukod, Barangay Kagawad Rod Serano, Barangay Kagawad Edison García, Barangay Kagawad Alice Dumla, Barangay Kagawad Dexter Francisco, Barangay Kagawad Pasing Datu, Barangay Kagawad Brian Espiritu, Barangay Kagawad Peling Magtuto, Barangay Treasurer Jerome Alcomga, and Barangay Secretary Jelín Torno.
Thank you, Majority Leader, to my guests. Allow us to okay the King House of Representatives all the time. Mabukay po kayo, kapitan, Kagawad, to my province mates and constituents in barangay Sindalan. Dakala salamat. On behalf of the Speaker, Martin Romualdes, Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading, House Bill Number 8268. Printed as well as electronic copies were furnished of the members pursuant to the rules. For this purpose, may we request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The chair is done. The motion is carried. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and resolution and call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill 8370, an act increasing the authorized campaign expenses of candidates and political parties amending for the purpose Section 13 of Republic Act Number 7166, entitled "An Act Providing for Synchronized National and Local Elections and for Other Electoral Reforms, Authorizing Appropriations Therefore and for Other Purposes." Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number... House Bill 8268, an act declaring April of every year as the National Basketball Month. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8268. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agarau, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantallón, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascub, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Rosas, Buahin, Bulitwigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayunuy, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro France, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tchua, Tschungalau, Ko Angelica Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Wankohaimi, Ko Wankoh Mark, Kolada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Tagooc, Delipe, Dalog, Dayangirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, Delos Santos, Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Dimaporo Siti Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhalí, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleio, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Fariñas, Fernández, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Funtibelia, Galeios, García Albert, García Dante, García José Arturo, García María Angela, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Garjola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gómez, Gonzaga, Gonzales Aurelio, Gonzales Neptali, Gonzales Sandro, Curiseta, Gico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Agidorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera, Oribata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Ko Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagundafni, Lagunsani, Lara, Lasatin, Lee, Ligarda, Libanan, Limkey Chong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Kapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariana Hernandez, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Negrales Juan Fidel Felipe, Negrales Margarita, Nolasco, Waminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuang, Ordanes, Ortega, Uanodizon, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehencia, Remulia, Rivilla Brian, Rivilla Ramon Dzolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez Ilohiyo, Rodríguez Rufus, Román, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaria, Sagaluran, Salceda, Sali, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rochelle, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihán, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suárez, Talyado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Tchodoro, Tevez Jose, Chanco, Cheng, Tolentino, Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velosituazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villa Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villa Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villa Nueva, Villor, Villaraza Suarez, Villa Rica, Vilago, Yamsuan, Yap Christian Tel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edwick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jezzo Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8268. Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Pantallón, Amatong, Barzaga, Biliones, Bolilia, Bondok, Briones, Coliantes, Dayangirang, Daza, Duhalí, Duterte, Di Ian Paul, Ecleio, Emano, Fariñas, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Gómez, Gonzaga, Agidorn, Ko Ricardo, Laxon, Lagman, Legarda, Libanan, Madrona, Matugas, Remulia, Rilio, Saulog, Tan Samir, Tan Chai, Tolentino, Villa Nueva, Yap Eric, Zamora Amparo Maria.
With two hundred seventy-two members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill Number 8268 is now approved on third and final reading. Floor Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading, House Bill Number 8370. Printed as well as electronic copies were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The chair is done. Motion is carried. And the Secretary General is now directed to read the title of the bill and call the roll for members for nominal voting.
House Bill 8370, an act increasing the authorized campaign expenses of candidates and political parties amending for the purpose Section 13 of Republic Act Number 7166, entitled "An Act Providing for Synchronized National and Local Elections and for Other Electoral Reforms, Authorizing Appropriations Therefore and for Other Purposes." Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8370. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agarau, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantallón, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascub, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Rosas, Buahin, Bulitwigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayunuy, Calderon, Calixto, Campos...
What is the pleasure of the gentle lady?
Yes, my vote is no, and I would like to explain my vote later.
Yes, that's noted.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro France, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tchua, Tschungalau, Ko Angelica Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Wankohaimi, Ko Wankoh Mark, Kolada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Tagooc, Delipe, Dalog, Dayangirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, Delos Santos, Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Dimaporo Siti Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhalí, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleio, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Fariñas, Fernández, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Funtibelia, Galeios, García Albert, García Dante, García José Arturo, García María Angela, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Loyola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gómez, Gonzaga, Gonzales Aurelio, Gonzales Neptali, Gonzales Sandro, Curiseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Agidorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera, Oribata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Ko Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagundafni, Lagunsani, Lara, Lasatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limkey Chong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Kapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariana Hernandez, Martínez, Marques, Martínez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Negrales Juan Fidel Felipe, Negrales Margarita, Nolasco, Waminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuang, Ordanes, Ortega, Uanodizon, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehencia, Remulia, Rivilla Brian, Rivilla Ramon Dzolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez Ilohiyo, Rodríguez Rufus, Román, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaria, Sagaluran, Salceda, Sali, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rochelle, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihán, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suárez, Talyado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Tchodoro, Tevez Jose, Chanco, Cheng, Tolentino, Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velosituazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villa Fuerte Luis Raymond... Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villaferte Luis Raymond, Villaferte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yamsuwan, Yap Christantel, Yap Christofferson, Yap Edwick, Yap Eric, Udivina Grace, UJZ Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri. Second call for consideration and third reading of House Bill number 8370. Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Barzaga, Biliones, Bolilia, Bondok, Briones, Koliantes, Deanghirang, Daza, Duhali, Duterte, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Imano, Fariñas, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Gomez Gonzaga, Hagidorn, Ko Ricardo, Laxson, Lagman, Ligarda, Libanan, Madrona, Matugas, Remulia, Rilyo, Saulog, Tan Samir, Tan Chai, Tolentino, Villanueva, Yap Eric, Zamora Amparo Maria.
With two hundred sixty-eight members voting in the affirmative, three in the negative, and one abstentions, House Bill number 8370 is now approved on third and final reading. Yes, Congresswoman?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, matagal ng kailangan ang campaign financing reforms hindi lamang para sa transparency and accountability ng mga kumakandidato at mga political parties, kundi para rin tiyakin na malaya at tapat na makakalahok ang lahat sa electoral na kampanya at halalan sa kasalukuyan na nananatiling batbat ng mga ulat ng vote buying, irgolarigdad at mga pandaraya ang eleksyon. Hanggang ngayon, halos walang pagbabago sa mga pangalan ng mga nanalo mula sa mga may kapangyarihang mga pamilya at negosyante. Lalong lumiliit pa ang pagkakataon na manalo at maluklok ang mga galing sa hanay ng karaniwang tao at mga mahinal- marginalized na grupo dahil sa umiiral na luma at bulok na sistema ng mga pandaraya sa halalan. Totoong hindi biro ang matinding epekto ng mataas na implasyon sa nagmamahalang presyo ng mga pangangailangan at iba pang gastusin kaya nga malakas na nananawagan ng Gabriella Women's Party ng nararapat na dagdag sahod para sa mga manggagawa. Ngunit hanggang nananatiling nakapako sa barat, nahalaga ang sahod hanggang barya-baryang minimum ang wage increase at nananatiling naghihirap ang kalakhaan ng ating mga kababayan. Ang panukalang tulad ng House Bill number 8370 ay para lamang sa mga politikong may rekurso sa paglahok sa eleksyon. Habang lalong dehado ang mga ordinaryong mamamayan nasasabak sa politika. Kung tataasan ng lima hanggang sampung beses ang pwede gastusin ng isang kumakandidato batay sa inflation rate at consumer price index, halos imposible talagang suntok sa buwan na makaabot ng marami at malawak na kampanya ang mga kandidatong leader manggagawa, magsasaka at mga karaniwang tao kumpara sa milyon-milyong makinarya ng mga mapera at malalaking pamilya at partido. Sa mga manggagawa nga lang, Mr. Speaker, hindi pa natin magawang dagdaga ng kanilang sahod tungo sa family living wage at para makarecover sa sumisirit na presyo ng bilihin. Gagawin pa nating mas mahirap para sa kanilang sumabak sa politika at makapagpanalo ng kandidatura. Malinaw na anti-poor at anti-democratic ang panukalang ito. Higit na dapat mantayan ang campaign election spending, palakasin ang mga transparency at accountability mechanism at gawing tunay na demokratiko ang mga lunsaran ng electoral na kampanya. Sa halalan, kailangan tiyakin na patas ang laban para sa maliit, maliliit o malalaki mang pangalan. For all these reasons, Gabriella Women's Party votes no to House Bill number 8370. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Lord Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading, House Bill number 8390. Printed as well as electronic copies of the bill has been furnished the members pursuant to the rules. For this purpose, may we request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
There are any objections? Chair is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is now directed to read the title of the proposed House bill and call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill 8390, an act granting the Philippine Sports Commission the authority to acquire real properties by other modes, amending for the purpose Section 7 of Republic Act Number 11214, otherwise known as the Philippine Sports Training Center Act. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill number 8390. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magseisay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulutbegtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayunuy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro France, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tchua, Tschungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Wanko Jaime, Ko Wanko Mark, Kolada, Koliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuak, Kuaresma, Agook, Delipe, Dalog, Deanghirang, Daza de Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar, Del Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisio Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Imano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Fariñas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Belia, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gerjola, Gerin, Gasetaya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Rosetta, Giko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagidorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Kung Hun, Labadlabad, Laxson, Laxson Noel, Lagman, Lagundafni, Lagonsani, Lara, Lasatin, Lee, Ligarda, Libanan, Limkay Chong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Mahapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magzino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariana Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisa, Noel, Negrales Juan Fidel Felipe, Negrales Margarita, Nolasco, Omenal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuwan, Ordanes, Ortega, Wanodison, Padianos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehencia, Remulia, Revilia Brian, Revilia Ramonjolo, Reyes, Rilyo, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yolojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Yada Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbango, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rochelle, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihang, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Talliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Tchodoro, Tevez Jose, Chanco, Cheng, Tolentino, Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Joselyn, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velosatwazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villaferte Luis Raymond, Villaferte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yamsuwan, Yap Christantel, Yap Christofferson, Yap Edwick, Yap Eric, Udivina Grace, UJZ Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri. Second call for consideration and third reading of House Bill number 8390. Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Barzaga, Biliones, Bolilia, Bondok, Briones, Koliantes, Deanghirang, Daza, Duhali, Duterte, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Imano, Fariñas, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Gomez Gonzaga, Hagidorn, Ko Ricardo, Laxson, Lagman, Ligarda, Libanan, Madrona, Matugas, Remulia, Rilyo, Saulog, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen, Tan Chai, Tolentino, Villanueva, Yap Eric, Zamora Amparo Maria.
With two hundred seventy-three members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill number 8390 is now approved on third and final reading. Lord Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading, House Bill number 8452. Copies of the bill has been furnished the members. For this purpose, I move that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and to call the roll thereafter for nominal voting.
There are any objections? Chair is none. The motion is carried. The Secretary General is now directed to read the title of the bill and call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill 8452, an act regulating the registration, licensure, and practice of physical therapy and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill number 8452. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magseisay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulutbegtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayunuy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro France, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tchua, Tschungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Wanko Jaime, Ko Wanko Mark, Kolada, Koliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuak, Kuaresma, Agook, Delipe, Dalog, Deanghirang, Daza de Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar, Del Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisio Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Imano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Fariñas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Belia, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gerjola, Gerin, Gasetaya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Rosetta, Giko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagidorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Kung Hun, Labadlabad, Laxson, Laxson Noel, Lagman, Lagundafni, Lagonsani, Lara, Lasatin, Lee, Ligarda, Libanan, Limkay Chong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Mahapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magzino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariana Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisa, Noel, Negrales Juan Fidel Felipe, Negrales Margarita, Nolasco, Omenal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuwan, Ordanes, Ortega, Wanodison, Padianos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehencia, Remulia, Revilia Brian, Revilia Ramonjolo, Reyes, Rilyo, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yolojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Yada Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbango, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rochelle, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihang, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Talliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Tchodoro, Tevez Jose, Chanco, Cheng, Tolentino, Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Joselyn, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velosatwazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villaferte Luis Raymond, Villaferte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yamsuwan, Yap Christantel, Yap Christofferson, Yap Edwick, Yap Eric, Udivina Grace, UJZ Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri.
Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill number 8452. Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Barzaga, Biliones, Bolilia, Bondok, Briones, Koliantes, Deanghirang, Daza, Duhali, Duterte, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Imano, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Gomez Gonzaga, Hagidorn, Ko Ricardo, Laxson, Lagman, Ligarda, Libanan, Madrona, Matugas, Remulia, Rilyo, Saulog, Tan Samir, Tan Chai, Tolentino, Villanueva, Yap Eric, Zamora Amparo Maria.
Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Major Leader.
I move that we recognize Congresswoman Franz Castro to explain her vote.
Can I just count the number, the vote first before the explaining of vote? I'll just announce the result. With two hundred seventy-four members voting in the affirmative, zero on the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill number 8452 is now approved on third and final reading. Major Leader?
Mr. Speaker, we move to recognize the Honorable Franz Castro to explain.
Honorable Franz, you recognize vote?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Bumoboto ng yes ang kinatawang ito sa House Bill 8452 o ang Philippine Physical Therapilo. Sinusuportahan ang kinatawan ng Act Teachers Partilis ang pagpapasa ng hiwalay na batas para sa ating mga physical therapies, para sa pagre-regularisa at pagpaunlad ng practice ng kanilang propesyon. Kung masasaid ko, Mr. Speaker, dalawa sa atin dito sa House of Representatives ng physical therapies kagaya ni therapist Ronaldo Cabral at therapist Vernalin Vergara na nakakatulong sa mga empleyado, sa ating mga kapwa kinatawan pagdating doon sa mga usapin ng tungkol sa physical therapies. Ngunit, mas maganda sana na makapaglagay tayo ng mga provision na magpo-protekta sa mga karapatan nila bilang mga health workers tulad ng minimum sahod, benepisyo, seguridad sa trabaho, pagbabawal ng kontraktualisasyon, at libreng continuing professional development. Muli, dinong speaker, yes, ang bota ng kinatawang ito para sa House Bill 8452. Maraming salamat.
Thank you, Honorable Franz. Lord Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration House Bill number 8463, and I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill and call the roll for nominal voting.
There are any objections? Chair is none. The motion is carried. Now the Secretary General is now directed to read the title of the bill and roll the, call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill 8463, not providing for the establishment and construction of a disaster food bank and stockpile in every province and highly urbanized city in the Philippines, providing for their maintenance and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill number 8463. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magseisay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulutbegtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayunuy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro France, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tchua, Tschungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Wanko Jaime, Ko Wanko Mark, Kolada, Koliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuak, Kuaresma, Agook, Delipe, Dalog, Deanghirang, Daza de Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar, Del Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisio Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Imano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Fariñas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Villan, Fuente Belia, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gerjola, Gerin, Gasetaya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Rosetta, Giko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagidorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Kung Hun, Labadlabad, Laxson, Laxson Noel, Lagman, Lagundafni, Lagonsani, Lara, Lasatin, Lee, Ligarda, Libanan, Limkay Chong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Mahapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magzino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariana Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisa, Noel, Negrales Juan Fidel Felipe, Negrales Margarita, Nolasco, Omenal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuwan, Ordanes, Ortega, Wanodison, Padianos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehencia, Remulia, Revilia Brian, Revilia Ramonjolo, Reyes, Rilyo, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yolojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Yada Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbango, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rochelle, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihang, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Talliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tan Yad, Tchodoro, Tevez Jose, Chanco, Cheng, Tolentino, Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Joselyn, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velosatwazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villaferte Luis Raymond, Villaferte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yamsuwan, Yap Christantel, Yap Christofferson, Yap Edwick, Yap Eric, Udivina Grace, UJZ Victoria... Udivina Grace, UJZ, Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri.
Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8463. Alonte Alvarez, Jose Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Barsaga, Biliones, Bolilia, Bondok, Breones, Colientes, Yangirangda, Sa Duhali, Duerte, Di Ian Pol, Icleo, Imano, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Gomez Gonzaga, Hagedorn, Corecardo, Laxon, Lagman, Ligada, Libanan, Madrona, Matugas, Remulia, Rilio, Saulog, Tan Samir, Tan Chait, Torrentino, Villanueva, Yap, Eric, Zamora Amparo Maria. With two hundred seventy-four members voting for the affirmative, zero in the negative and zero abstentions. House Bill Number 8463 is now approved on third and final reading. For leader.
Mr. Speaker, we move for consideration of House Bill Number 8466 and I request that Secretary General read the title of the same and call the role for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? Chair is none. Motion is carried. The Secretary General is now directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter, the role of members for nominal voting.
House Bill 8466, An Act Preserving the Indigenous Games of the Philippines and Appropriating Funds Therefore. Role of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8466. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Cheron, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez, Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matong, Angangara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison Arenas, Aragansha, Assisyo, Atayde, Amentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barsaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautista, Limbinites, Bernos, Biliones, Bilon, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buahain, Bulut, Pigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahain, Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawgdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro, Franz, Castro Jane, Celesta Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalaw, Conjericantatsha, Co' Elizaldi, Copilar, Kuwanku, Jaime, Kuwanku, Mark, Colada, Colientes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuak, Kuressma, Dagohak, Dalipe, Dalogde, Yangirangda, Sa Desus, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar, De Los Santos, De Mauporo, Muhammad Kali, De Mauporo, City Amina, Junisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duerte. Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Pol, Icleo, Imano, Inverga, Escudero, Esparres, Espina Estrela, Yudella, Farines Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores Fortes, Frasco, Fresnadi, Funtibelia, Galleos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Seoturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gastaaya, Gato, Go, Christopher Gomar, Gores, Gomez Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Gusetta, Taguig, Ginto, Gulyas Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Harresco, Hataman Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagundaphni, Lagunsani, Lara, Lasatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limkay, Chong, Loyola, Luis Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maseda, Madrona, Magxino, Malapitan, Mangawang Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoletta, Marcos, Mariana Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado, Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisa, Noel, Negrales, Fidel Felipe, Negrales Margarita, Narasco, Ominal, Olaso, Olivares, Ochuan, Ordanas, Ordega, Uwana, Dizon, Padianas, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Pena, Pimentel, Plaza, Prito, Primisias, Agabas, Pumarin, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehencha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramon Jolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yulo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman Romero, Romaldes, Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes, Yade Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sackdalan, Segurberia, Sakaluran, Salseda, Salis, Salimba, Gonzalo, Salva, Mesanto, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rochelle, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solonsuwan, Swansing Horasho, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Talia, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith, Maika, Tan Reynolds, Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chaitan, Watko, Tariela, Theodoro, Tevis, Sechang, Hotcheng, Torrentino, Tulfo Erwin, Tulfo Joselyn, Tulfo Ralphendel, Tupas, Tutorti, Umale, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriana, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velasotuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Revilla, Revilla Feto, Luis Raymond, Revilla Feto, Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villar, Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yamsuan, Yap, Cristenter, Yap, Christoferson, Yap, Edwick, Yap, Eric, Udivina Grace, UJZ, Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8466. Alonte Alvarez, Jose Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Barsaga, Biliones, Bolilia, Bondok, Breones, Colientes, Yangirangda, Sa Duhali, Duerte, Di Ian Pol, Icleo, Imano, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Gomez Gonzaga, Hagedorn, Ko Ricardo, Laxon, Lagman, Legarda, Libanan, Madrona, Matugas, Remulia, Rilio, Saulog, Tan Samir, Tan Chait, Torrentino, Yap, Eric, Zamora Amparo Maria.
With two hundred seventy-five members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative and zero abstentions. House Bill Number 8466 have been approved on third and final reading. For leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to consider House Bill Number 8468 on third reading and I request that the Secretary General read the title of the measure and call the role for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is now entitled, they directed to read the title of the bill and call the role of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 8468, An Act Institutionalizing the Philippine National Games and Appropriating Funds Therefore. Role of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8468. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Cheron, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez, Jose Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matong, Angangara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Aragansha, Assisyo, Atayde, Amentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barsaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautista, Limbinites, Bernos, Biliones, Bilon, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buahain, Bulut, Pigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahain, Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawgdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro, Franz, Castro Jane, Celesta Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalaw, Conjericantatsha, Co' Elizaldi, Copilar, Kuwanku, Jaime, Kuwanku, Mark, Colada, Colientes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuak, Kuressma, Dagohak, Dalipe, Dalogde, Yangirangda, Sa Desus, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar, De Los Santos, De Mauporo, Muhammad Kali, De Mauporo, City Amina, Junisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duerte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Pol, Icleo, Imano, Inverga, Escudero, Esparres, Espina Estrela, Yudella, Farines Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores Fortes, Frasco, Fresnadi, Funtibelia, Galleos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Seoturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gastaaya, Gato, Go, Christopher Gomar, Gores, Gomez Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Gusetta, Taguig, Ginto, Gulyas Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Harresco, Hataman Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagundaphni, Lagunsani, Lara, Lasatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limkay, Chong, Loyola, Luis Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maseda, Madrona, Magxino, Malapitan, Mangawang Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoletta, Marcos, Mariana Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado, Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisa, Noel, Negrales, Fidel Felipe, Negrales Margarita, Narasco, Ominal, Olaso, Olivares, Ochuan, Ordanas, Ordega, Uwana, Dizon, Padianas, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Pena, Pimentel, Plaza, Prito, Primisias, Agabas, Pumarin, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehencha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramon Jolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yulo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman Romero, Romaldes, Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes, Yade Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sackdalan, Segurberia, Sakaluran, Salseda, Salis, Salimba, Gonzalo, Salva, Mesanto, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rochelle, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solonsuwan, Swansing Horasho, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Talia, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith, Maika, Tan Reynolds, Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chaitan, Watko, Tariela, Theodoro, Tevis, Sechang, Hotcheng, Torrentino, Tulfo Erwin, Tulfo Joselyn, Tulfo Ralphendel, Tupas, Tutorti, Umale, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriana, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velasotuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Revilla, Revilla Feto, Luis Raymond, Revilla Feto, Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villar, Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yamsuan, Yap, Cristenter, Yap, Christoferson, Yap, Edwick, Yap, Eric, Udivina Grace, UJZ, Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8468. Alonte Alvarez, Jose Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Barsaga, Biliones, Bolilia, Bondok, Breones, Colientes, Yangirangda, Sa Duhali, Duerte, Di Ian Pol, Icleo, Imano, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Gomez Gonzaga, Hagedorn, Ko Ricardo, Laxon, Lagman, Legarda, Libanan, Madrona, Matugas, Remulia, Rilio, Saulog, Tan Samir, Tan Chait, Torrentino, Yap, Eric, Zamora Amparo Maria.
With two hundred seventy-five members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative and zero abstentions. House Bill Number 84468 is now approved on third and final reading. For leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading, House Bill Number 8495 and I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill and to call the role for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? Chair is none. Motion is carried. The Secretary General is now directed to read the title of the bill and call the role for nominal voting. House Bill 8495, An Act Strengthening Local Sports Programs to Develop Young Athletes and Appropriating Funds Therefore. Role of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8495. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Cheron, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez, Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matong, Angangara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison Arenas, Aragansha, Assisyo, Atayde, Amentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barsaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautista, Limbinites, Bernos, Biliones, Bilon, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buahain, Bulut, Pigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahain, Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawgdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro, Franz, Castro Jane, Celesta Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalaw, Conjericantatsha, Co' Elizaldi, Copilar, Kuwanku, Jaime, Kuwanku, Mark, Colada, Colientes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuak, Kuressma, Dagohak, Dalipe, Dalogde, Yangirangda, Sa Desus, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar, De Los Santos, De Mauporo, Muhammad Kali, De Mauporo, City Amina, Junisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duerte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Pol, Icleo, Imano, Inverga, Escudero, Esparres, Espina Estrela, Yudella, Farines Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores Fortes, Frasco, Fresnadi, Funtibelia, Galleos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Seoturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gastaaya, Gato, Go, Christopher Gomar, Gores, Gomez Gonzaga, Gores Aurelio, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Gusetta, Taguig, Ginto, Gulyas Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Harresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagundaphni, Lagunsani, Lara, Lasatin, Lee, Ligada, Libanan, Limkay, Chong, Loyola, Luis Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maseda, Madrona, Magxino, Malapitan, Mangawang Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoletta, Marcos, Mariana Hernandez, Mariano, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado, Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisa, Noel, Negrales, Fidel Felipe, Negrales Margarita, Narasco, Ominal, Olaso, Olivares, Ochuan, Ordanas, Ordega, Uwana, Dizon, Padianas, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Pena, Pimentel, Plaza, Prito, Primisias, Agabas, Pumarin, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehencha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramon Jolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yulo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman Romero, Romaldes, Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes, Yade Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sackdalan, Segurberia, Sakaluran, Salseda, Salis, Salimba, Gonzalo, Salva, Mesanto, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solonsuwan, Swansing Horasho, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Talia, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith, Maika, Tan Reynolds, Maikel, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chaitan, Watko, Tariela, Chadoro, Tevis, Sechang, Hotcheng, Torrentino, Tulfo Erwin, Tulfo Joselyn, Tulfo Ralphendel, Tupas, Tutorti, Umale, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriana, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velasotuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Revilla, Revilla Feto, Luis Raymond, Revilla Feto, Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villara, Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yamsuan, Yap, Cristenter, Yap, Christoferson, Yap, Edwick, Yap, Eric, Udivina Grace, UJZ, Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8495. Alonte Alvarez, Jose Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Barsaga, Biliones, Bolilia, Bondok, Breones, Colientes, Yangirangda, Sa Duhali, Duerte, Di Ian Pol, Icleo, Imano, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Gomez Gonzaga, Hagedorn, Ko Ricardo, Laxon, Lagman, Ligada, Libanan, Madrona, Matugas, Remulia, Rilio, Saulog, Tan Samir, Tan Chait, Torrentino, Yap, Eric, Zamora, Amparo Maria. With two hundred seventy-five members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative and zero abstentions. House Bill Number 8495 is now approved on third and final reading. For leader.
Mr. Speaker, we move to consider House on third reading, House Bill Number 8586 and we request the Secretary General to read the title of the measure and call the role for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? Chair is none. Motion is carried. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and call the role of members for nominal voting.
House Bill 8586, An Act Providing Stronger Measures for the Conservation and Protection of Wildlife Resources and Their Habitats and Appropriating Funds Therefore, repeating for the purpose of Public Act Number 9147 or the Wildlife Resources Conservation and Protection Act. Role of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8586. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Cheron, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez, Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matong, Angangara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison Arenas, Aragansha, Assisyo, Atayde, Amentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barsaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautista, Limbinites, Bernos, Biliones, Biliones, Bilon, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buahain, Bulut, Pigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahain, Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawgdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro, Franz, Castro Jane, Celesta Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalaw, Conjericantatsha, Co' Elizaldi, Copilar, Kuwanku, Jaime, Kuwanku, Mark, Colada, Colientes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuak, Kuressma, Dagohak, Dalipe, Dalogde, Yangirangda, Sa Desus, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar, De Los Santos, De Mauporo, Muhammad Kali, De Mauporo, City Amina, Junisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duerte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Pol, Icleo, Imano, Inverga, Escudero, Esparres, Espina Estrela, Yudella, Farines Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores Fortes, Frasco, Fresnadi, Funtibelia, Galleos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Seoturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gastaaya, Gato, Go, Christopher Gomar, Gores, Gomez Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Gusetta, Taguig, Ginto, Gulyas Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Harresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagundaphni, Lagunsani, Lara, Lasatin, Lee, Ligada, Libanan, Limkay, Chong, Loyola, Luis Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maseda, Madrona, Magxino, Malapitan, Mangawang Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoletta, Marcos, Mariana Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado, Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisa, Noel, Negrales, Fidel Felipe, Negrales Margarita, Narasco, Ominal, Olaso, Olivares, Ochuan, Ordanas, Ordega, Uwana, Dizon, Padianas, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Pena, Pimentel, Plaza, Prito, Primisias, Agabas, Pumarin, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehencha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramon Jolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yulo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman Romero, Romaldes, Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes, Yade Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sackdalan, Segurberia, Sakaluran, Salseda, Salis, Salimba, Gonzalo, Salva, Mesanto, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rochelle, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solonsuwan, Swansing Horasho, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Talia, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith, Maika, Tan Reynolds, Maikel, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chaitan, Watko, Tariela, Chadoro, Tevis, Sechang, Hotcheng, Torrentino, Tulfo Erwin, Tulfo Joselyn, Tulfo Ralphendel, Tupas, Tutorti, Umale, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriana, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velasotuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Revilla, Revilla Feto, Luis Raymond, Revilla Feto, Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villara, Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yamsuan, Yap, Cristenter, Yap, Christoferson, Yap, Edwick, Yap, Eric, Udivina Grace, UJZ, Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri.
Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8586. Alonte Alvarez, Jose Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Barsaga, Biliones, Bolilia, Bondok, Breones, Colientes, Yangirangda, Sa Duhali, Duerte, Di Ian Pol, Imano, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Gomez Gonzaga, Hagedorn, Ko Ricardo, Laxon, Legada, Libanan, Madrona, Matugas, Remulia, Rilio, Saulog, Tan Samir, Tan Chait, Torrentino, Yap, Eric, Zamora Amparo Maria. With two hundred seventy-six members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative and zero abstentions. House Bill Number 8586 is now approved on third and final reading. For leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to consider on third reading, House Bill Numbers 1311 and 1313 and I request the Secretary General to read the titles of the same and to call the role for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? Chair is none. The motion is carried. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the two proposed local bills and call the role for nominal voting.
House Bill 1311, An Act Converting the Bicol International Airport Road in the Municipality of Deraga, Province of Albay, into a national road and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 1313, An Act Converting the Tourism Mega Highway in Legaspi City, Province of Albay, into a national road and appropriating funds therefore. Role of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 1311 and House Bill Number 1313. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Cheron, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez, Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matong, Angangara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Aragansha, Assisyo, Atayde, Amentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barsaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautista, Limbinites, Bernos, Biliones, Bilon, Basug, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernas, Biliones, Bilon, Bolilia, Bondok, Bungalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brasas, Buahain, Bulut, Big Tang, Bustos Cabredo, Agas, Kahain, Uy, Calderon, Cristo Campos, Kogwagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castrofranc, Castro Jane, Celeste Chant, Chato, Tua, Chungalaw, Conjericantasha, Coelizaldi, Copilar, Kuwang, Kuwame, Kuwang, Ku Mark, Kalada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kuoresma, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalogde, Yangirang, Dasa de Jesus, Defenexia Defensor, Delmar de Los Santos, Demaporo, Mohamed Kali, Demaporo, City Amina, Junisio Domingo, Duavit, Duhalid, Terete, Divosino Ino, Divosino Michael Carlos, Diian Paul, Ecleyo Imano, Verge, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Yudella Farines, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fentebela, Galeios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Seoturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Tuyol, Agaringa, Sataya, Gato, Goi, Christopher Gomar, Gores Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Napteri, Gonzalez Sandro, Cruzeta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jerez, Koataman, Hernandez Herrera, Horibata Javier, Ko Olga, Korregado, Ko Wilton, Kuhun Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagun Daphne, Lagunsani Lara, Lasit, Indili, Legada, Libanan, Limkaychong, Lojo Alaluisto, Lumayag, Mahapagal Arroyo, Masayda Madrona, Magxino Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoletta, Marcos Mariana, Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado, Revilla, Miguel Momo Mordenava, Vanisa, Noel, Negrales, Juan, Fidel Felipe, Negrales, Margarita, Nolasco, Waminal, Olaso, Olivas, Ochuan, Ordanas, Ortega, Ulanodizon, Padianos, Paduano, Paglas Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual Pena, Pimentel Plaza Plato, Pimissi Agabas, Pumaran, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rencha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramon Jolo, Reyes, Rilyo, Rivel, Robes, Rodriguez, Julio, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman Romero, Romales, Ferdinand Martin, Romales, Yedemarie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roques, Saktalan, Sakerberia, Sakaluran, Salis Salimbawon, Salo, Salva Me, Santos, Sauluk, Silberia, Sinson Rochelle, Sinson Ronald, Sinson Mihyan, Solon, Zuan, Sinson Horashos, Sinson Micaela Angela, Soares, Talia, Tamayo, Tambuting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith, Michael, Tan Renes, Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambutan, Chay, Tan Watko, Tariela, Theodore, Tevez, Jose, Tiyanko, Tiyang, Turintino, Turfu, Irwin, Turfu, Joselyn, Turfu, Ralph Wendell, Tupasutor, Ti Umayo, Unabi, Unga, Valeriano, Valmer, Vargas, Vargas Alfoso, Vilasco, Viloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Vila, Vila Ferte Luis Raymond, Vila Ferte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villaras, Suarez, Villa Rica, Villago, Yamsuan, Yap, Chrisenter, Yap, Christopher Son, Yap, Edwick, Yap, Eric, Yudi, Vina Grace, Yujes, Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Numbers 1311 and 1313. Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Barzaga, Biliones, Bolilia, Bondok, Briones, Colientes, Yangirang, Duhalid, Terete, Diian Paul, Imano, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Gomez Gonzaga, Hagedorn, Korregado, Laxon, Legada, Libanan, Madrona, Matugas, Remulia, Rilyo, Sauluk, Tan Samir, Tan Chay, Turintino, Yap, Eric, Zamora Amparo Maria.
With two hundred seventy-seven, two hundred seventy-seven members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill Numbers 1311 and 1313 is now approved on third and final reading. Floor leader. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the omnibus approval on third reading of the following House Bills. House Bill Number 8664, House Bill Number 8665, House Bill Number 8666, House Bill Number 8700, House Bill Number 8701, and House Bill Number 8702. Copies thereof were distributed to the members pursuant to our rules, and may ask the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bills and thereafter to call the role for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The chair is none. The motion is carried. And now the Secretary General is directed to read the title of the aforementioned ah, local bills and call the role of members for nominal voting. House Bill 8664, An Act Declaring the Immediate Environments of Chiapo Church, Plaza Miranda, San Sebastian Church, Plaza del Carmen, Keson Bridge, Life Theater or Old Wil, Wil, Wil Yongko Building, Another Built Heritage with Notable Historical and Cultural Significance as Natural Heritage Zone, Providing for their Restoration, Liability, Conservation and Development and Appropriating Funds Therefore. House Bill 8665, An Act Establishing the Bai Bai City Cultural Center and Museum in the City of Bai Bai, Province of Lake, Defining its Purposes and Activities and Appropriating Funds Therefore. House Bill 8666, An Act Establishing the Mountain Province Cultural Center and Museum in Mountain Province, Defining its Purposes and Objectives and Appropriating Funds Therefore. House Bill 8700, An Act Establishing the Baguio City Sports High School and Appropriating Funds Therefore. House Bill 8701, An Act Establishing a Senior High School in Progressive Village 3, Barangay Bayanan, City of Baku or Province of Tabite, To be known as the Progressive Senior High School and Appropriating Funds Therefore. And House Bill 8702, An Act Establishing an Elementary School in Progressive 15, Barangay Mulino 2, City of Baku or Province of Cavite, To be known as the Progressive Elementary School and Appropriating Funds Therefore. For all members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Numbers, 8664, 8665, 8666, 8700, 8701, and 8702. Abalos Abante Abunda, Cheron Asidre, Akopadjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Alba Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong Amatong Angara, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison Arenas, Argansha Assisto, Atide, Amentado Balindong, Barbara Barbers, Perona Barzaga, Basug, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernas, Biliones, Bilon, Bolilia, Bondok, Bungalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brasas, Buahain, Bulut, Big Tang, Bustos, Cabredo, Agas, Kahain, Uy, Calderon, Cristo Campos, Kogwagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castrofranc, Castro Jane, Celeste Chant, Chato, Tua, Chungalaw, Conjericantasha, Coelizaldi, Copilar, Kuwang, Kuwame, Kuwang, Ku Mark, Kalada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruzicado, Kuwa, Kuoresma, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalogde, Yangirang, Dasa de Jesus, Defenexia Defensor, Delmar de Los Santos, Demaporo, Mohamed Kali, Demaporo, City Amina, Junisio Domingo, Duavit, Duhalid, Terete, Divosino Ino, Divosino Michael Carlos, Diian Paul, Ecleyo Imano, Verge, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Yudella Farines, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fentebela, Galeios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Seoturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Caljola, Garinga, Sataya, Gato, Goi, Christopher Gomar, Gores Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Napteri, Gonzalez Sandro, Cruzeta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jerez, Koataman, Hernandez Herrera, Horibata Javier, Ko Olga, Korregado, Ko Wilton, Kuhun Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagun Daphne, Lagunsani Lara, Lasit, Indili, Gada, Libanan, Dimgachong, Tuyol, Luistro, Lumayag, Mahapagal Arroyo, Masayda Madrona, Magxino Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel Maranyon, Marcoletta, Marcos Mariana, Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado, Revilla, Miguel Momo Mordenava, Vanisa, Noel, Negrales, Juan, Felipe, Negrales, Margarita, Nolasco, Waminal, Olaso, Olivas, Ochuan, Ordanas, Ortega, Ulanodizon, Padianos, Paduano, Paglas Palma, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual Pena, Pimentel Plaza Plato, Pimissi Agabas, Pumaran, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rencha, Remulia, Revilla, Brian, Revilla Ramon Jolo, Reyes, Rilyo, Rivel, Robes, Rodriguez, Julio, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman Romero, Romales, Ferdinand Martin, Romales, Yedemarie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roques, Saktalan, Sakerberia, Sakaluran, San Seeda, Salis Salimbawon, Salo, Salbume, Santos, Sauluk, Silberia, Sinson Rochelle, Sinson Ronald, Sinson Mihyan, Solon, Zuan, Sinson Horashos, Sinson Micaela Angela, Soares, Talia, Tamayo, Tambuting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith, Michael, Tan Renes, Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambutan, Chay, Tan Watko, Tan Yel, Chudoro, Tevez, Jose, Chankot, Cheng, Turintino, Turfu, Irwin, Turfu, Joselyn, Turfu, Ralph Wendell, Tupasutor, Ti Umayo, Unabi, Unga, Valeriano, Valmer, Vargas, Vargas Alfoso, Vilasco, Viloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Vila, Vila Ferte Luis Raymond, Vila Ferte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villaras, Suarez, Villa Rica, Villago, Yamsuan, Yap, Prisenter, Yap, Christopher Son, Yap, Edwick, Yap, Eric, Yudi, Vina Grace, Yujes, Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Numbers 8664, 8665, 8666, 8700, 8701, and 8702. Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Barzaga, Biliones, Bolilia, Bondok, Briones, Colientes, Yangirang, Duhalid, Terete, Diian Paul, Imano, Ferrer, Juliet Marie, Gomez Gonzaga, Hagedorn, Korregado, Laxon, Lagman, Legada, Libanan, Madrona, Matugas, Remulia, Rilyo, Sauluk, Tan Samir, Tan Chay, Turintino, Yap, Edwick, Zamora Amparo Maria. With two hundred seventy-seven members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill Numbers 8664, 8665, 8666, 8700, 8701, and 8702 is now approved on third and final reading. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the omnibus consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8667 and 8668, printed copies of which were distributed to the members on pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and therefore calling the role for nominal...
Is there any objection for the omnibus motion? The chair is none. The motion is carried. The Secretary General is now directed to read the title of 8667 and 8668 and call the role for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 8667, An Act Establishing the Camarines Norte First District Engineering Office of the Department of Public Works and Highways in the Municipality of Labo, Province of Camarines Norte, Re naming the existing district engineering office in the Municipality of Diet as the Camarines Norte Second District Engineering Office and Appropriating Funds Therefore. House Bill Number 8668, An Act Establishing a Department of Agrarian Reform Provincial Office in the Municipality of San Jose, Province of Dinagat Islands, and Appropriating Funds Therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8667 and 8668. Abalos Abante Abunda, Cheron Asidre, Akopadjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Alba Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong Amatong Angara, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison Arenas, Argansha Assisto, Atide, Amentado Balindong, Barbara Barbers, Perona Barzaga, Basug, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernas, Biliones, Bilon, Bolilia, Bondok, Bungalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brasas, Buahain, Bulut, Big Tang, Bustos, Cabredo, Agas, Kahain, Uy, Calderon, Calixto Campos, Kogwagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castrofranc, Castro Jane, Celeste Chant, Chato, Tua, Chungalaw, Conjericantasha, Coelizaldi, Copilar, Kuwang, Kuwame, Kuwang, Ku Mark, Kalada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kuoresma, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalogde, Yangirang, Dasa de Jesus, Defenexia Defensor, Delmar de Los Santos, Demaporo, Mohamed Kali, Demaporo, City Amina, Junisio Domingo, Duavit, Duhalid, Terete, Divosino Ino, Divosino Michael Carlos, Diian Paul, Ecleyo Imano, Verge, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Yudella Farines, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fentebela, Galeios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Seoturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Tuyol, Agaringa, Sataya, Gato, Goi, Christopher Gomar, Gores Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Napteri, Gonzalez Sandro, Cruzeta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jerez, Koataman, Hernandez Herrera, Horibata Javier, Ko Olga, Korregado, Ko Wilton, Kuhun Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagun Daphne, Lagunsani Lara, Lasit, Indili, Legada, Libanan, Limkaychong, Lojo Alaluisto, Lumayag, Mahapagal Arroyo, Masayda Madrona, Magxino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoletta, Marcos Mariana, Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado, Revilla, Miguel Momo Mordenava, Vanisa, Noel, Negrales, Juan, Fidel Felipe, Negrales, Margarita, Nolasco, Waminal, Olaso, Olivas, Ochuan, Ordanas, Ortega, Ulanodizon, Padianos, Paduano, Paglas Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual Pena, Pimentel Plaza Plato, Pimissi Agabas, Pumaran, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rencha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramon Jolo, Reyes, Rilyo, Rivel, Robes, Rodriguez, Julio, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman Romero, Romales, Ferdinand Martin, Romales, Yedemarie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roques, Saktalan, Sakerberia, Sakaluran, Salis Salimbawon, Salo, Salva Me, Santos, Sauluk, Silberia, Sinson Rochelle, Sinson Ronald, Sinson Mihyan, Solon, Zuan, Sinson Horashos, Sinson Micaela Angela, Soares, Talia, Tamayo, Tambuting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith, Michael, Tan Renes, Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambutan, Chay, Tan Watko, Tariela, Theodore, Tevez, Jose, Tiyanko, Tiyang, Turintino, Turfu, Irwin, Turfu, Joselyn, Turfu, Ralph Wendell, Tupasutor, Ti Umayo, Unabi, Unga, Valeriano, Valmer, Vargas, Vargas Alfoso, Vilasco, Viloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Vila, Vila Ferte Luis Raymond, Vila Ferte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villaras, Suarez, Villa Rica, Villago, Yamsuan, Yap, Chrisenter, Yap, Christopher Son, Yap, Edwick, Yap, Eric, Yudi, Vina Grace, Yujes, Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Numbers 8667 and 8668. Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Barzaga, Biliones, Bolilia, Bondok, Briones, Colientes, Yangirang, Duhalid, Terete, Diian Paul, Imano, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Gomez Gonzaga, Hagedorn, Korregado, Laxon, Lagman, Legada, Libanan, Madrona, Matugas, Remulia, Rilyo, Sauluk, Tan Samir, Tan Chay, Turintino, Yap, Eric, Zamora Amparo Maria.
With two hundred seventy-seven members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill Numbers 8667 and 8668 is now approved on third and final reading. Floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the immediate transmital of the bills approved on third, transmital to the Senate of the bills approved on third reading in today's session. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair is none. The Secretary General is now directed to transmit, to transmit those approved on a third and final reading in the Senate. Floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move for the consideration of House Bill Number 8568 under Committee Report Number 690, which was submitted by the Committee on Forestation.
The Secretary General is now directed to read the title of the bill. House Bill 8568, An Act Providing Mechanisms That Shall Ensure the Effective Implementation of a Nationwide Tree Planting Program amending for the Purpose to Public Act Number 10176, otherwise known as the Arbor Day Act of 2012. Floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we recognize Congressman Joseph Stephen Paduano to begin sponsorship of the bill.
The Chairman of Public Accounts, Chairman Paduano, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, distinguished majority leader. This representation will sponsor House Bill Number 8568, containing Committee Report 690, and for on behalf of Representative Eleanor C. Bulut Big Tang, Chairperson, special committee on forest restoration, and Representative Dante Is Garcia, the author of this bill, and for that purpose, Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt the explanatory note of House Bill Number 8568 as the sponsorship speech for the said bill.
Is there any objection on that motion? The chair is none. Motion is approved. Thank you, Mr. Sponsor. Chairman Takaraps Paduano, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
The period of interpolation is now open. Is there any objection? The chair is none. Motion is carried. Leader, floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Congressman Raoul Manuel for his interpolation.
Congressman Raoul Manuel is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Magandang gabi po sa lahat. Would our sponsor be willing to entertain a few questions?
Gladly, Mr. Speaker, from the distinguished member of the minority, Yinoong Raoul Manuel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Tanong lang po natin, Mr. Speaker, 'yung dahilan para idagdag ang NCIP, or National Commission on Indigenous Peoples sa mga ahensya na magiging bahagi ng pagpapatupad nitong batas. Ang konteks po na ating tanong, marami na pong instances na, instead na ifulfill ng NCIP 'yung kanyang mandato na protektahan ang mga ancestral domains, meron pong mga opisyal ng NCIP na sila pa mismo 'yung para bang nagbubukas ng mga ancestral domains para maabuso ng mga entities na labas naman dapat dun sa pagprotect ng mga ancestral domains.
Ah, thank you Congressman Raoul for that question. Anyway, while I do believe that there is such basis for those allegations against incompetence, alleged incompetence of the said agency, but, Mr. Speaker, in fact, Mr. Speaker, 'yung concern about NCIP as an agency that should protect the interest of the indigenous peoples in this country, supposedly, and that is actually, Mr. Speaker, an issue since the previous congresses, and I do believe that there are bases also, and I, I support and sympathize with all those groups and individuals that questions the competence of the agency. But on the other hand, Mr. Speaker, while there are problems with NCIP as an agency of government, by including NCIP in the Arbor Day Committee will also give way to the representation of the IPs, and the IPs... And the IPs in the Philippines should be protected with regards to their claims on ancestral domain. And as of now, though there is a question of the competence of the NCIP as an agency of government, we will not also... Wag na rin ating isang tabi, ang interest na mga IPs that they should be heard with regards to the Arbor Day Committee, not only in planning, not only in the deliberations, but of course, in the implementations of all the tree planting activity that will be planned by this Arbor Day Committee.
Ah, Mr. Speaker, in terms of representation of our indigenous people, posible po kaya na direkta na mismo manggaling sa mga indigenous people 'yung maging representative nila doon sa committee na bubuin para sa Arbor Day. At sila, hindi na 'yung NCIP 'yung maging delegate doon.
Ah, anyway, in under section two, there's a provision about the membership of the civil society organization. But of course, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, ako, as an agency of government, they should be placed there. But with regards to section two on the civil organizations, I do believe that such memberships of the civil organizations should have a track record, should track record that stands and generally promotes the interest of the indigenous peoples in the Philippines. So if ever the good congressman from the Kabataan Partilis will introduce an amendment with regards to representation of the civil society organization that belongs to the IP, I will gladly entertain such amendments that will be introduced by the good congressman from the Kabataan Partilis.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. We will look into that. Ah, pangalawa pong topic ay 'yung pagdagdag ng ancestral domains sa mga lugar kung saan pwedeng magsagawa ng mga tree planting activities. Ang concern po natin dito, Mr. Speaker, ang mga indigenous people natin kasi, meron din silang sariling mga practices na pwedeng matagal na nilang sinasagawa bago pa man sila magkaroon, halimbawa ng interaction with people who are not indigenous. Ginagawa ni nila yun para protektahan 'yung kanilang mga lupa, 'yung kanilang environment. In fact, our indigenous people are trustworthy, ano, dun sa kanilang papel at the forefront of preserving our environment from encroachment by potentially destructive activities. So instead of us opening the doors for entry into ancestral domains, why not, mas pagkatiwalaan po natin, pwede naman tayo makipag-aralan with our indigenous people, pero ako, Mr. Speaker, I'm leaning na hayaan na natin sila, na sila na 'yung bahala, paano pangalagaan, paano tiyakin 'yung reforestation sa kanilang mga lupain.
Ah, thank you for that question, Mr. Speaker. I would just like to note that though there is a, there is a tree planting program even inside the claims of the, for the ancestral domains of IPs, the Arbor Day Committee, or even the DNR, will not just implement, plan and implement such tree planting activity without, without the consent of the IPs. So in short, Mr. Speaker, if the community, IP's community will not allow a tree planting activity in their community, they are protected by the imperial law. No one, and even the DNR, can implement a tree planting activity inside the IP or ancestral domain of the IPs unless otherwise there is a clearance from the community mismo. Hindi pwede yun, because they will violate the law. And we will not allow even government agencies to violate the law. We should protect the interest and the security of the ancestral domain being claimed by the IPs.
That is duly noted, Mr. Speaker. Para sa ating huling topic ay 'yung pagspecify naman ng bamboo sa ba't ibang mga pwedeng itanim as part of the tree planting activities. May we know bakit po merong pagmention explicitly ng bamboo as one of the many possible plants?
Ah, thank you, thank you, thank you for that question, Ginoong Raúl Manuel. Mr. Speaker, for the record, bamboo, while we admit that bamboo is not a tree, is a species of a grass. But let me cite some, some data that will justify why bamboo tree or bamboo will be included in the program of the Arbor Day, which is the tree planting plan for, for the country. One, bamboo is the fastest growing land plant in the world. It has been recorded growing at forty-seven point six inches in just a day or twenty-four hour period. Now, in bamboo, of course, there are, there are bills as of now in Congress which proposes to support and enhance the bamboo industry. But of course, Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, bamboo has proven in the history of soil erosion, not only the country, but in the whole world. Bamboo can prevent soil erosion especially on the riverbanks. Now, again, though I admit that bamboo is classified as a tree, but by putting it as part of the tree planting, a tree planting program for the Arbor Day Committee, Mr. Speaker, I do believe that we need it because, again, this is the most fastest growing species that can help prevent soil erosion especially on the riverbanks, Mr. Speaker.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ang kasunod po nating tanong ay paano lang po natin matitiyak na hindi po magiging puro bamboo lang 'yung maitatanim. Ibig sabihin, Mr. Speaker, ay hindi siya mag-e-end up bilang mga blanket bamboo plantations. While I do agree dun sa mga pwedeng positive na points ng paggamit po ng bamboo, pero hindi din po siya dapat maging replacement dun sa mga native species sa ating mga forests. Dahil 'yung mga native species na dapat i-restore ay sila talaga 'yung makakaattract, halimbawa ng native wildlife para talaga mabuhay natin 'yung ating mga forests. So ang posisyon po natin, Mr. Speaker, pwede naman talaga maging bahagi 'yung bamboo, pero yun, paano lang po natin maiwasan na magkaroon ng blanket bamboo plantations?
Ah, I concur with the opinion of the good gentleman from Kabataan Partilis. Tama po, hindi dapat bamboo lang. And of course, dapat ang priority talaga is the tree, especially my indigenous species, especially in the forest land. Tama po, I do agree with your position on that, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. With that, I would end my interpolation. And 'yung naging discussion po natin, no, I, we hope that it would help in proper implementation. At pwede din po through the IRR, no, doon natin na mailagay 'yung ba't ibang mga provisions para talaga matiyak na ma-achieve natin 'yung ating reforestation goals. So that would be all, Mr. Speaker, and thank you also to our sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Congressman Raúl. Rest assured that this representation sponsoring this bill will, part of our, ah, part of our function in the House will make sure that, that the implementation of such bill, if ever this will be passed into law, this representation will help to really implement what will be, what should be implemented on this bill, and hopefully this will be passed into law. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Sponsor, Congressman Carraps, and thank you Congressman Raúl. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of interpolation.
The period of interpolation is now closed. There any objection? There none. Motion is approved. Floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendment.
Period of amendment is now open. There any objection? There is none. Motion is approved. Floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to introduce committee or individual amendment, I move that we close the period of amendment.
There any objection? The chair is none. The period of amendment is now closed. Floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we approve on second reading House Bill number 8568 under Committee Report number 690.
There is a motion to approve House Bill number 8560 under Committee Report number...
690.
690. Those who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
And those who are against, please say nay. The highest of it, House Bill number 6568, and 8568 under Committee Report number 690. Is now approved on second reading. Floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions on House Bill number 7006 and Senate Bill number 2165 on, on providing for the automatic income classification of provinces, cities. Members, representatives, members, Mercedes K Alvarez, representatives, Representative Steve Chongbiensolon, Representative Wawa Fortes, Representative Arnan Pangalinan, and Representative J C Avalos.
There is a motion to designate the following members on the House Bill number 706 and the Senate Bill number 2165. So on this motion, is there any objection? The chair is none. The motion is approved. Floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, considering that copies of Journal number 10 dated August 15, 2023, were already distributed to the members, I move to dispense with the reading of the said journal. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to dispense with the reading of the aforementioned journal. Is there any objection? The chair is none. The motion is carried. The reading of the said journal is dispensed with. Floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve Journal number 10 dated August 15, 2023.
There is a motion to approve Journal number 10 dated August 15, 2023. Is there any objection? The chair is none. The motion is carried. House Journal number 10 is hereby approved. Floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until Tuesday at August 22, 2023 at 3 o'clock PM. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection on the favorite motion? The chair is done. Session adjourned until August 22, 2023, Monday at Tuesday at 3 PM. Le...